All right, can you guys, can you hear me all right?
Yep. Hey, Mark, we can hear you.
Hi, Evan. Are we ready to get started?
I believe so.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead and start. Good evening. I'd like to call this December 7th, 2023 Sammamish Planning Commission meeting to order. There's a virtual gavel tap right there. Let's start out with roll call for this evening. So first, Carrie Bosworth.
Here.
Mike Fresco.
I'm here.
I think I see Mike there. Sayad Sababian.
Here.
Sudra Hain Sunkara.
Here.
John Bachman. Did I say I was here? I guess I said I'm here. And then Ajay is not here and has an excused absence. All right, next, let's do a meeting accessibility statement. Julian, what are we doing for the meeting accessibility statement for this evening?
Chair Bachman, I'll chime in. Evan Fisher. We are going to just forego the meeting accessibility statement tonight because of the change of format where we are not accepting virtual public comment either through Zoom or over phone, but we will be accepting public comment in person and written public comment.
All right, thanks for that. Maybe I should just mention, I'm sorry I can't be there with you. I unfortunately injured my ankle and I'm pretty mobile at the moment, but hopefully very soon we'll be mobile again and we'll be back in person with you. So I'll try to do this virtually for this evening. Okay, next, approval of the agenda. I actually wanted to mention on the agenda, kind of a sort of a slight correction. The agenda, at least the one I'm looking at, included public comment at the end, but actually the public comment that's agenda-related, since the only thing on our agenda is a public hearing for the Prose Plan. We will have any public comment about the Prose Plan during that public hearing, so there won't actually be a separate public comment period at the end. So that's a slight adjustment to what the agenda for this evening says. Anybody else have anything on the agenda? Okay, let's call the agenda approved. Next is approval of the minutes from our November 16th meeting. Does anyone have any comments about that, the meeting minutes from that meeting? No? Okay. Let's call the approval of the minutes from the November 16th meeting, approved. Next is non-agenda public comment. So like I said, we're going to have a public hearing on the Prose Plan. So if there's anyone in the room who would like to make public comment about other items, now is the time for non-agenda public comment. Three minutes a person, five minutes if you represent an organization. Anyone there like to make non-agenda public comment? And Evan or Julian, you'll have to tell me.
One second, Chair Bachman. Okay, we have nobody for the public comment period at this moment.
Okay, thank you. So let's move on to our main topic for this evening. We're going to talk a little bit about the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan and do a public hearing about that plan. So let's go ahead and move on to that item on our agenda.
Good evening, Chair Bachman and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Anjali Meyer, Director of Parks Recreation and Facilities, and very excited to bring for your consideration tonight a final draft of the 2024 Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. We have been in front of you a few times this year and we appreciate your guidance and support through this process. This document is the result of a year-long effort of a fairly big team. With me tonight in the room is Janie Walzer, our management analyst, who has helped project manage this effort. And online, we have our consultant from Conservation Techniques, Steve Do, as well as Shelby Parault, our Parks Project Manager, who has also worked alongside Janie and led the Parks Capital Improvement Plan portion of this project. Kevin Teague, our Deputy Director, will also be joining us through this presentation. With that, I'll turn it over to Janie.
Thank you. So tonight, we will review with you the edits that were made to the draft plan that you saw last month, based on feedback and comments that we received. And we also hope at the end of the public hearing, you will recommend that City Council adopt the 2024 Prose Plan through an approved motion. So we're going to start tonight by an overview to center our conversation, make sure everyone's on the same page for tonight's discussion. I'm going to review the edits made to the draft and the capital improvement plan, as well as talk through why some of the edits were made. We have a suggested motion for you to consider, and then we'll go over next steps. You see it every time, but again, for the record, the Parks Recreation Open Space Plan is our strategic document. It's updated every six years, and it is our Parks Department's guide for maintenance and development of parkland recreation events, trail connections, and more. It also serves as a communication tool to tell City Council, other city departments, and the public what is status of our Parks Recreation Department is. It was a year-long effort to update the Prose Plan, and that included a robust community engagement process that resulted in feedback from over 900 residents. A lot of opportunities for engagement included a community survey for tabling events, two open houses, three stakeholder discussion groups, lots of online social media posts, three city council meetings, three planning commission meetings, and six Parks and Recreation Commission meetings. The community feedback that we received gave our plan update a direction that differed from what we heard in 2018. The last update focused on land acquisition. Oh, excuse me. Last update focused on land acquisition and increased athletic field capacity and improved wayfinding. And in the past six years, the city has acquired 65 acres of parkland, completed an athletic field study, and started some of those field improvements, and also developed awayfinding signs that have been installed around the city and plans for more to come. This year, the community feedback indicated a desire for the department to continue maintenance of our existing parks and amenities, focus on developing new parks on land that's we already own, that's currently undeveloped, and increase the variety of recreation opportunities in the city. And then expanding on those themes, here are some examples of sorts of projects that would fall into each of those categories. Taking care of what you have looks like renovating existing parks and continuing the level of maintenance that we've established. When possible, increasing ADA compliance in alignment with our ADA transition plan, and continuing to preserve our open spaces such as our preserves, Beaver Lake Preserve, and so on. Building of the park system on currently owned undeveloped land that has been identified for future built environment recreation opportunities includes projects such as future Beaton Hill and Big Rock Park South, improvements to the Beaver Lake waterfront, installing permanent restrooms in place of portable restrooms that are currently in parks. As a contract city, expanding recreation options would involve more contacts with third-party providers. The projects that are in-house that we can do look like adding pickleball or community garden plots when possible, or other amenities to new parks. Considering universal play options when looking at upgrading or replacing existing playgrounds, and then also additional public art opportunities, which our upcoming Art Strategic Plan, we hope to accomplish next year, will also help us in doing. Exhibit three that you had in your agenda packets contains a complete list of all the questions and staff responses that we received, not only from the Planning Commission, but Parks and Recreation Commission and City Council. So tonight, I'm just going to cover the top five suggestions that we either received most often or were most critical errors in the original draft that needed to be corrected. The first suggestion we received way back at the beginning of 2023, and so we included it right from the get-go, but there is a summary page of accomplishments that the department has accomplished since the 2018 plan, the direct result of that effort. And that is included on page four of the current draft. It was also pointed out that our population trend that we had differed from that was than what was in the comprehensive plan. And so we reached out to community development, got their data, and now the two plans are in communication and have the same information. The order of goals was changed to reflect the themes of the plan, whereas previously they weren't arranged according to any hierarchy. So now they match what we heard from the community, excuse me, as priorities. Maintenance and sustainability is now goal three. Client resiliency for trails, five, and then parks and open space, goals six and seven. The last two main highlights I want to cover have to do with our Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP. A question was asked frequently if more money should be allocated to trail connections, as it's so important to the community, but those trail connections are usually lower-priced projects. And so the current allocation of $50,000, $500,000 per biennial budget cycle should be enough to cover what the city plans to do. And then lastly, there was confusion over the land acquisition funding line that ended in 2023. And so we added a clarifying sentence that any funds from the $4 million in 2023 will be carried over every year until it's expended. So it's not going away, it's just being carried forward. Here is that example motion that I mentioned for you to consider adopting, suggest recommending to City Council that they adopt the 2024 plan. Quick next steps. We are nearing the end of the planning cycle, just looking at one or two more meetings. Next Tuesday, on the 12th, City Council will have a public hearing. And depending on if they want to adopt that night, that'll be the last meeting. But if they have a lot of comments or some edits and they want more time, we can adopt on January 16th. So that's the end of my quick presentation for you. Questions or comments, but I'll turn it back to the chair if you want to start the public hearing process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone on the commission have questions? And you guys are all about two millimeters tall on my screen, so.
Okay, Mark. Oh, I didn't raise my hand, I guess. I don't have a question as much as a statement because I've been attending the Parks Commission meetings, including one last night. One of the comments that has come up repeatedly regarding the Prose Plan is requests for more granularity on certain elements of the construction of individual projects. And I think it's worth reminding ourselves that this is a strategic plan. It's a guiding document, it's not a construction document. And although it identifies a number of projects, it's important to keep in mind that individual projects still need to be funded. And then each major project needs to go through a final design process, including ample neighborhood and community review and input opportunities. Finally, the project needs to go through the permitting process, which again, may open the door for further comments. So I think that, and Anjali, the Parks Director spoke to this last night, satisfied those comments about more granularity, about mitigation of certain issues. So I just wanted to get that in the record and remind us where we are and what we're looking at. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Maybe comment, not necessarily question. I brought up the issue of the need for some education element in the plan. One of the, excuse me, one of the possibility that I brought up that you guys are going to be looking at is working with the school districts as far as educating the children about the need to appreciate the open space and get to know them and all that. I looked at the whole reports, but I didn't see in reference to educational component of the plan.
I'm quite certain some of our goals outline that already. That is, and it may not be specific to schools and children, but it may be education across the board.
Would it be, would it be appropriate maybe making a statement or maybe make a note in the report that the city recognized the importance of education element?
Certainly. Like I said, it's already in the goals. And but if it's not, we can make sure that we add it to it wherever pertinent. It may be in more than one goal.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Carrie.
Yep. Thank, thank you for the presentation, and I wanted to say thank you for the accomplishments page. That was really helpful. I liked multiple pages, I think, because a lot has happened. So great work there. As I was looking through, I just caught one minor thing in Appendix A for Big Rock Central, big, excuse me, Big Rock Park Central under amenities. It just didn't list a parking lot. So the other parks did, so just that might be helpful to add. Sure, thank you for catching that. And that, that's all for now.
Okay, who else? Mike, Sydney. Anything?
I would only comment that having read through this a second time, I think it strikes a really good balance of being directional, having a lot of information about, you know, the current state and what we'd like to accomplish without, as John had mentioned, getting into, you know, details of specific projects. So I hope that the community members, as they read through this, would have a very good sense of what we're trying to accomplish and that it was built based on lots of input. So I feel really good about it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I will say that in my current predicament, I have a much greater appreciation for the efforts at accessibility and removing barriers because my current experience is that mobility challenges are much more of a deal sometimes than what you might expect. All right, last call for comments or questions for the presentation. Okay. Thank you. Now, let's go ahead and I will open the public hearing and we'll take public comments about the Prose Plan. And then I'll close the public hearing and we'll have a discussion and hopefully a motion to make a recommendation. So tap of the gavel and we'll open the public hearing. Would anyone in council chambers like to make public comments related to approval of Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan?
Yes, Chair, we do have a couple individuals in the lobby. So go ahead and go up to the podium and speak.
Just a friendly reminder to say your name and where you live as you start. Thank you.
I guess I'm technically challenged. Sorry. I'm Janelle Deutsch, and I am representing the Sammamish Botanical Garden Society. You might have seen the Heritage Garden in Big Rock Central, and we had the privilege to partner with the city and create and install that garden. And I hope you've enjoyed what we've done so far. And so now we would like to expand beyond the fence and give back more to the community and would like to be on the ground floor putting this idea to you in the open spaces there that are saying passive use. We would like to create some other gardens other than just a heritage garden, which is basically based, you know, around the Reared Freed House. We would like to expand to create a great picks garden. We have many people from all different countries that come to us and they don't know what plants to plant in our climate, our microclimate. And we don't need a lot of space. We call them botanical rooms, where we could do shade gardens, dry gardens, sun gardens, wet gardens, but a teaching element for our community and show them plants that thrive in our microclimate. Addressing the educational part of what I heard just a couple minutes ago, the Botanical Garden Society, we do involve our students. We have volunteers, we have the Cub Scouts, we have workshops, we have a whole lot of things that we offer to the children and schoolchildren. And so we do many tours of the garden. We talk about heirloom plants, pollination, growing food, you know, giving back to the community. And we can extend this into other parts of Sammamish and other parts of different lands that you may want to have a passive use. So keep us in mind, we're good partners, and we also have funding. So yeah, it's a good, a good match all the way around. So that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
And we have no further public comment.
All right, so I will close the public hearing. Thank you for that. Next, if someone could make a motion, that would be a good way to get us started.
Janie, could you put the motion back on the screen?
The motion is going to be something.
Okay, I don't hear anybody else stepping up. So motion to recommend that the City Council adopt the 2024 Parks and Recreation and Open Space Plan.
Did I hear a second? I think I heard a second. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that the Planning Commission recommended the City Council to adopt the 2024 Prose Plan. Any discussion about this? You know, we've actually talked about this quite a bit and just recently. So I'm curious if there's any further discussion and in support or modification of the recommendation or anything like that.
So I just want to add that thanks to staff and the consultant. For readers of this draft would note that a number of our and of the Planning Commission and Parks Commission recommendations that have been made over the past several meetings have been incorporated, including things like the executive summary and moving the goals up in the document. So many thanks for that. So I know it was a lot of work and a great job.
Other comments or discussion, Carrie?
Yeah, I just also want to reiterate again how detailed it is. I really appreciate all the maps showing things, you know, that, you know, what we have control over, but also things that are elsewhere in the city. So I just appreciate the thoroughness and it's, it's exciting to see it go into this next phase. So thank you.
I have a question, and of course, I wanted to kind of express my appreciation for the work and staff and consultant. And really, this is a great report with a lot of good graphics. And thank you to staff and consultant. The question that I have is more less kind of procedural. How are we supposed to, because the commission received some comments from the public? Are we supposed to, are you supposed to make a presentation and respond to those comments from the public that the commission received?
Public comment is for the consideration of the commissioners, and so public comment is really meant for you to do with what you will. Should you choose to make an amendment to the motion and act on public comment, you do it that way, but it's not for staff to present or respond to public comment.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Maybe I'll just make a quick comment to say that I do think that the Parks in Sammamish are one of the things that has gone well and consistently through the course of development of the last, what has it been, almost 24, 25 years now? And so this is a good example of something that works well in the city, and I appreciate both the efforts of the plan development that went into everything that's included in here. But just as a general statement of the Parks and the community, it's one of the jewels, I think, of Sammamish, so that's a great thing. I would like to ask if, if there's be any consideration for not changing the motion or the plan, but putting in the letter to the council an encouragement to continue to look out for acquisition opportunities, since this plan shifts away from acquisition and more into, you know, keep, maintain, and protect what you've got. But I wouldn't want us to take our eye off the ball as a community for donations or other opportunities, just because we didn't put it in the plan. And I don't think that that would happen, but I still think it's an important thing to keep an eye out for with the funds that we do have available. Just because acquisition has maybe dropped down a run doesn't mean that it should be ignored. And I don't think anybody would do that, but sometimes it's important, I think, to say those things out loud. So I'm just curious, I would like to put that in the letter. I don't have a super strong feeling about it. Someone will probably catch on by watching the video, this video anyway. But rather, not a change to the plan, just a suggestion in the transmitted letter.
Yeah, this is Janie Walzer. I drafted the letter for you. I'm happy to put that in, in the draft before we send it to you tomorrow for signature. And if you're not happy with it, we can wordsmith it tomorrow.
Yeah, and Janie, the one thing is I don't want to do that if it's just me. If everybody else says, no, you're all of it, and nobody cares.
Then I'll wait from direction for the board and see how it goes.
Would it be possible to see a copy, to display the draft, so at least we can see it?
Yeah, I think it would be, I would make sure, yes, absolutely. It would be something super simple that would just say, you know, I think probably already the letter's going to maybe note or might note that this is the current plan and there's a focus on maintaining what we've got. And then I would just like to see some, very few words say, and the Planning Commission recommends the council that we continue to always be on the lookout for opportunities for acquisition. Just that simple. And again, if it's not a priority for others, I understand, that's fine. It was just a suggestion, because we had quite a bit of discussion about it in the past.
I would support that suggestion.
Yeah, I would also, I, it just builds on some of the conversation that we had at the last Planning Commission meeting. Mark, you brought that up and we talked about it and felt that that was important to take advantage of opportunities that would come up, even if that's not like of the highest priorities at this point.
Okay. We'll, we'll take a look at that in the, in the letter. And like I say, keep it super simple, but just as a, as a highlight. Other than that, excuse me, other than that, I think the plan looks great and I support the motion. Anybody else have any comments related to this? Looks like no, so then I would suggest that it's been moved and seconded, that the Planning Commission recommend adoption of the Prose Plan to the City Council. I'm going to call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, no? All right, that was, I think, a unanimous yes vote to recommend this to the City Council. Thanks, everyone. All right, that's, that was pretty quick. When we do these things close together, that seems to work out that way. Anything else, Evan, or anyone, anything from staff, other than maybe mentioning the calendar?
Nothing, excuse me, nothing else from staff, other than I'd just like to take a second to thank the Planning Commission for another great year. This is our last meeting of the year, and we've done a lot of work from the Comprehensive Plan, the Climate Action Plan, Stormwater Code Updates, Prose Plan Adoption. So another very productive year for the Planning Commission, and thank you for all the work. We hope you enjoy the holiday season and rest up because 2024 will be very, very busy. The one calendar note I'd make is on, our next meeting is Jan, what's that? January 4th. We're thinking of resurrecting our, an old meeting format for the first meeting of the year, where we do maybe a potluck-style gathering with the Planning Commissioners and staff in the executive briefing room and kind of have it a little more informal. We'll go over our accomplishments of '23 and look ahead to '24. So keep an eye out in your emails for more information on that. But otherwise, I think we are all set.
Those are always fun, and it'll be even good motivation for me to get myself mobile again. All right, I think that's it. If someone would like to move to adjourn?
Still moved?
Second?
Second.
I'll second it. So it's been moved and seconded, we adjourn for the evening. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, no. Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful holiday season, and we will see you in January. And thanks for accommodating me on the screen.
Thanks, Mark. Feel better.
Thank you.